Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Fuller. Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
There.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Uh, please join me if you're able on standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, thank you very much. The minutes of City Council for February fifteenth.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes. Seen no, uh, plenty standing up for any conversations. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes held on February fifteenth, 2022 as written and to dispense with the reading.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Uh, we have, uh, no special reports, but letters, communication, system concerns. And now we do have a citizen concern. Um, and, uh, I think everybody said the Pledge of Allegiance a little louder today. Uh, even what's happened in Ukraine, I think it's, uh, appropriate that we, uh, recognize it and, uh, give you a couple of minutes to talk about what you've, uh, got going on.
Yes. My name is Alavachenka, and I want to thank you for, for having this extra meeting specifically for, for us to, to hear, for you to listen. I appreciate your time very much. Um, I'm a resident of, of Perrisburg for the last three and a half years and resident of the United States for the last, oh, five and a half. I used to be a teacher in the city of Kiev, which is currently being bombed by Russian invasion. And I still have friends. I have my family, my minor siblings who are still there. They're begging for help every day, sending those terrifying messages and pictures that just cannot make me sit still and be indifferent. I'm a law school student, and I, I know I have resources and ability to, to reach for public. My goal is to, to make people aware that we have opportunity here in the United States to help Ukraine nowadays, to help everyone who is suffering there. I was never an activist. This is my, I guess, first time I'm doing that, and I, I have not been able to practice in this area, so I, I don't even know, honestly, where to start. I've been supported by the university very much, and for my, I was supported with my peo- with my peers. College students who are Americans, they, they, they know how this process works. My, my goal is to raise awareness and, and help people in Ukraine as fast as they can. Me and my family, my American family, we've been actively trying, you know, serve the community here in Perrisburg. And I'm asking your help now.
Do you want to talk about your event on Thursday?
Yes, we, we've been organizing the event that calls Toledo Helps Ukraine Rally. And this event is, is aimed to, to have people know what is going on and why Ukraine is being invaded. We will have speakers there who would educate on us on the topic a little bit. After that, we will have a, a walk to, uh, from the union to College of Law. And hopefully by that time, we will have some more links that, that we can distribute as far as to have the funds.
Yeah, feel free to send the links to me. Have you got, uh, in contact with the sheriff from one county, whose family is from Ukraine as well?
Yes, Mr. Vasilevich.
Yes.
Was very helpful for the last three and a half days. Yes. I guess what I'm asking is, is to, is to aid us with, uh, people who are skilled and talented and, and, and activities as such. So the city of Perrisburg can contribute somehow to establish for us a, a certain structure and, and, um, a base of branches that, that will be directly helping people in Ukraine. We don't have a fund yet. We, we do not know where to start. I'm not an organization. I am, um, I think, I'm just a person. GoFundMe page is being hacked right now very actively, and, and people are trying to scam those, those resources in their own benefit. We would like to have something designated from, from Perrisburg, Toledo, that would help directly to raise the funds, because we receive over this three days, hundreds of messages that comes to my personal email, and I have no ability to even manage that. There's, uh, hundreds of people wants to contribute and help, and that, those are only from Toledo area. We're asking for help with the people who, who knows what they're doing, so they can help us to establish a, a solid foundation for this, uh, movement to go further.
And do you have a contact information for yourself that, I can think of a few people that might be assistance?
I was gonna say, let me give you my cell phone number.
Yes.
And you have my email, and I think we can start a dialogue and then get it to council members.
Information.
But I think there certainly is a willingness on at least my part, and I know members of councils as well, to help and provide, and we can also, we have a new, um, Public Information Officer, who we're gonna introduce in a minute. We can share links and those kind of things and be supportive.
If you see a QR code right here, you can join the, the group we created on Facebook. It has a designated email there. But as I said, I, I would need some help with those emails being processed. And we, we received a call from a senator yesterday who is, is willing to help as much as the, as, as he can. He was invited to a rally. We ju- we just need a people to help us with this.
Also, any questions?
I have a comment. Um, this hits home for me, because my grandfather Kovac lost his farm when the communist rolled into Slovakia. Um, he's from the Brussels. Kate can say it better than I. I butcher the name of his hometown, which was but over by Bratislava. And I remember my father talking about how cousins and aunts and uncles were just pulled off the street, thrown in jail for no reason, never saw anything. So, um, the least we can do is do what we can help.
I'd just like to commend you for your efforts. I know we spoke outside briefly, and this is not easy, that this undertaking you, you begun, so I encourage you to stay strong. The road is, uh, gonna be a long one, uh, but you'll, you'll have a lot of people behind you. It's just a very worthy effort. And prayers about you and your family, all those people in Ukraine.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really would love to help out in whatever way possible. I don't want to speak for anyone in council, but I'm sure most of us up here, and everyone agree that we want to do what we can to help. Uh, there are definitely resources out there. I would love to try to help you get connected with.
Call to the rally.
Is, is there a good contact that you? You don't necessarily have to provide it for the public record, um, but.
Yeah, she, she just email me or.
Yeah, because I, I think we have some resources that can really help you. Um, along with.
Yes.
Uh, uh, yeah, along with who you're working with at the university, they're gonna have a lot of resources. I think everyone would agree, I can't even imagine what this week has been like for you.
Yeah.
If we can help, I, you know, I'll, I'll put some stuff out there. Um, and I, I think, I, I think there are ways we can help you, and I, I, and like I told you a second ago, activists are born out of necessity. You're doing exactly what you need to be doing.
Thank you.
Um, and you're gonna get a lot of help from this community. I'm confident of that, so.
I, I wanted to say that University of Toledo, even though they're very helpful, but they, they don't have a designated person who will coordinate all that. This has been, you know, me and my classmates who organized committee. Yeah, I, I will leave my card, and, and I will not hold you any longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I didn't think more. I should have been more prepared.
We'll get it to everybody.
Well, Tom, will you be a point of contact?
Yeah.
A lot of, because I mean, she's got her hands full. She didn't send the people.
We can get information. If she just gets me, we'll get it to everybody at council, and we'll also get, I have a few links to stuff. Well, I get.
We're not going to the task, I mean, it's trying to, to make this work in our organization.
So, just to be clear, one of the. One of the main things you're trying to set up before your rally on Thursday is trying to get a, basically a verifiable fund.
Yeah, but we don't want to attach to church right now, but that one of these will be the requisite for the minority organization.
Right.
What we're trying to do is to make, uh, Toledo Helps Ukraine contribution, where the people of Toledo specifically have a, a chance to get their own donation, their own.
So, a charitable organization set up quickly? Okay.
Like a 501.
Yeah, like a 501(c)(3), expedited?
Okay. There is a organization here in Toledo, um, the Toledo Community Foundation would be a good one to, to sit down and talk with that can get those things set up for you. I'm actually trying to see if I can find the contact information for that person.
I have a, my moot court competition tomorrow that I represent the University of.
Good luck.
Good on that, too.
Yeah. We'll do that. Yeah, you'll also need some, after that, a, a place where people can donate a donation, but for that to happen, we need to know if we can actually transfer it to the, to Ukraine.
I mean, there's a good community in Cleveland. I'm sorry, can I? My name is Tatiana.
Please.
My name is Tatiana. I've been living in Toledo for 14 years, so, um, something like Cleveland, I have family in Cleveland, and they have, um, almost like a straight shot from there to send things to, um, Ukraine, well, they're gonna send to Ukraine, it goes to Poland, and then from Poland, people who can help, well, and tears, friends, they deliver that to Ukrainian border, and then our Ukrainian people get it from there and disperse it all over Ukraine. So, we were thinking maybe something, create organization that we can collect those donations, uh, and maybe like transfer them to Cleveland. I mean, it's, it's just tough. It, we just got together and a lot of happening in the past few days, and we just don't know how to handle it. But we want to really help and be involved with home, because my parents are still there and grandparents and friends in Kiev. Right now, I have, um, extended family that sits in the bunker right now, and they running of supplies and things like that. So we're just here, wanna ask you if you can help us with logistics.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Mayor's report team, small. In consequence at the moment, but, uh, we do have, we do have, we're very excited to have a new, um, Public Information Officer, and I'll invite her to the podium to introduce herself and, uh, tell herself a little bit about the council, and then, uh, I'm sure we'll set up meetings for everybody, but why don't we introduce you to the public and to the council?
Hi, um, my name's Marie Dunn. I am here, this is my second day. Um, I didn't expect to come here tonight until today, so I'm really excited to be here. Um, I come from Cleveland State University, where, where I was there for about the past eight months. Um, decided I didn't want to live in Cleveland, so I am back. Before that, I was, um, at BGSU for eight years, where I worked in marketing and communications, handled all the social media for, for BGSU and for Cleveland State, as well as all the marketing, um, some of the marketing and branding for universities. So I'm excited to be here. Um, I'm from the Akron area originally, but I've come back to Toledo twice now, so I think I belong here, and I'm excited to be here and work with the city.
We're very excited to have you, and, uh, and she comes with a lot of experience and knowledge, so we think will be very helpful to us, and, uh, we look forward to you working back a second day, so we're pretty excited about that, too.
I'll be back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Welcome, Marie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, no other report? Uh, City Administrator?
Your report?
Finance Director?
No, it's what?
Law Director?
Your report?
You run a tight ship in the administration. President of Council?
Council does not run a tight ship. I do have a couple items here. Uh, have a, just the announcement of a public hearing on April 5th, 2022. Uh, we have four public hearings. The first starting at 6:10 PM. Um, and then I did have a quick question to see if we've heard anything back on the Water Tower, uh, in regards to, um, our seven brothers on that, uh, written proposal.
Uh, we do have some information. Uh, once we verified with them last week, late last week, that we did not have stencils any longer, because they were destroyed 20-plus years ago. Uh, they did tell us today that they need either a vector file, which we do not have of the Water Tower, um, or we need a high-resolution graphic, uh, picture, but something not taken with a cellphone. Um, so we have neither that as well. So we're looking to see what it would take to get that high-resolution graphic, uh, in order for them to make a proposal to us.
Okay. You know, but how long that might take?
Um, have some calls, some feelers out to figure out how to get that done. Because you'd need a, you could just take a picture from the ground, because you'd need the angle of the Water Tower. So, uh, I have a call into Chief Jones to see if perhaps we can run one of our drones up there and take some pictures, and if that would be the resolution that they would need. So I have to get the resolution from our piece of equipment, back to Brian, our engineer, get it back to the contractor to see if that's the resolution that they need in order to do a takeoff.
Okay. Is there any other questions regarding?
Can I speak on the, on the tower? I just want to.
Yes.
I just, I, um, this issue seems so minor after listening to our guest speaker here tonight, so, but I still, I still have a few things I'd like to say, and I, and I, and I did want to make sure I didn't forget anything, so I wrote it down, so just bear with me. I've been doing a, a lot of, a lot of, uh, research and soul search and everything else on this since, since our last meeting, and, um, I found out a few things. The artwork on the Water Tower was created in 1993. I learned some interesting facts, uh, from some of the original 1993 documents I acquired from its creator, and minutes from the council meetings of that same year. I got ahold of those. And what I got out of that is, one thing, the ideas for the artwork came from the Perrisburg Junior High art students. I thought that was interesting. Secondly, there was a committee formed designated for the Water Tower project, consisting of elected officials and citizens. Um, and, uh, the original color of the silhouettes was supposed to be hunter green, uh, but because the contractor would not warranty the green from fading, the color was changed to black in the last, in the last, uh, month or so before that was done. Um, they wanted $6,500 extra to put a clear coat on it to, to protect it from fading and, and an extra $800 to be green, so they just said, let's just make it black. So I just thought everybody might find that interesting. Um, and then during also in these documents I saw were, uh, the Perrisburg, uh, there was a common theme that they, uh, had here in this whole thing, is that Perrisburg is a wonderful family community, the place to raise a family. And in my opinion, that has not changed. Perrisburg still is a wonderful place to raise a family. The, the artwork on the Water Tower may have represented what Perrisburg looked like 29 years ago, but I realize it's not what Perrisburg looks like or should look like today. What it does, while it does show a family-friendly message, I recognize that it does not represent all families. When talks first began over a year ago, that the tower needed to be repainted, the administration was asked by members of council, uh, to engage the public to get ideas for, for new artwork. For reasons I'm still unaware, that did not happen. And that is disappointing, because I believe we missed a golden opportunity to perhaps showcase some local talent that could have given us artwork with multiculturalism, diversity, and a welcoming message. At our last meeting, I voted in favor of putting money in the budget to keep the artwork as is until the next time it needs repainting, because I truly believe that there should be input from the community before a change is made. Since then, I've given this issue a lot of thought. I've personally asked several people what they thought of the artwork on the tower. I've asked people of different ages, genders, and races. I've asked residents, non-residents, and I even sent photos to people who have never laid eyes on the tower and asked them what they see in the artwork. And among the input I received were some pretty clear points I, I got. Number one, although the scene is very family, family-friendly, the figures are quite outdated. And number two, changing the silhouettes from black to blue will not do anything to update the scene, nor will it make the derogatory joke go away. And since, since, I feel since the original stencils are no longer exist, it, it just would not make sense to endure the extra cost of creating new stencils just to paint the outdated artwork one more time. With good conscience, I cannot disagree with any of those, uh, thoughts that I, I heard from the people I, I polled, and, and with only one month from today is where it's scheduled to be drained and the work begins, I just don't see how it can be done, and, and I think it's time we just take the lessons we've learned here in 2022 and apply it into the future decisions of, of this kind. And with that in mind, I'll be voting to choose one of the options that the administration has presented to us. For the record, I'm in favor of option C. I like the, I like the tagline that says embracing the past poised for the future. One more thing, if I may. Councilman Van Hoozen brought up another issue that I'm, I'm in total agreement with. In the spirit of inclusiveness, we believe it would be appropriate to eliminate the words "city of" in front of Perrisburg for these reasons. One is, this tower is right on the border of our neighbors in Perrisburg Township. Number two, our, our other three towers just simply say Perrisburg, and no tower in the history has, has ever said "city of Perrisburg." They've always just said Perrisburg. And, um, also, there are many township residents who pay to get their water from the city, Perrisburg, so. So I asked the administration if you would consider that request, uh, whether the original artwork stays or goes. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you for letting me speak.
I don't think the administration would have a problem with that.
That would be one.
It's up to one of my reporters. All right. Okay. Moving to committee reports. You're up for minutes.
I'm first. Thank you. You have to drink water after that. Yeah, we have, we have a, you know, I have no report, but, uh, I would like to, um, take the, uh, our amended budget, uh, for its third reading, and so, uh, and vote on it tonight. So with that, I would like to introduce Ordinance 8-2022 for the third final reading, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordinance 8, 2022, amending Ordinance 54, 2021, previously amended by Ordinance 4, 2022, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures through the year ending December 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
I move that Ordinance 8-2022 passed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Okay, um, that's all I have. The, uh, the next Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting, uh, will be a week from tonight, um, March 8th at 5:30 PM. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, Safety Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Safety Committee did not meet, um, so there is no report, but our next scheduled meeting is March 22nd, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Uh, Recreation?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report. Our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 8th, at, uh, 6:30 PM.
Plaining and Zone, thank you. Plaining, Zone?
Uh, no report. We'll meet tomorrow at 5:30.
Personnel Committee?
Uh, no report. We meet Thursday, March 3rd at 4:00 PM, and I, I want to apologize to anybody that was planning on attending the, the meeting, I think it was scheduled earlier this week. It got moved last week, so my apologies for that change.
Public Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor. You have a report? Uh, the Public Utilities Committee met on February 23rd, 2022, being called to order at 6:30 PM. Myself, meeting members present were Ms. Matroni, Mr. Smith, and also myself. Also present were Bridget Cabot, Kate Sandretto, Alice Gotsi, Ed, and Matt Chouwen. Uh, there were no citizen concerns. The approval of prior month's meeting minutes was passed unanimously. The sewer credits tabulation, uh, Ms. Gotsi stated that for the month of February, there were four instances, with none of them being over $1,000. Only the water powered back with some pump failed required a dye test. Ms. Gotsi explained that any credits over $500 require a dye test unless they are outdoors. The NOEC, Electric and Natural Gas Resolutions. Uh, Ms. Sandretto explained that the one resolution will authorize the Mayor and Director of Finance to enter into a customer supply agreement for the provision of third-party electric generation for residential and small commercial education participants within the city of Perrisburg. The other resolution will accept the proposal of Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC to provide natural gas supplies for opt-out aggregation to eligible residential and small businesses in the city of Perrisburg. These would be emergency measures, because electrical and natural, or electric and natural gas will not give a firm price until the agreed settlement. Given the vol- volatility of the market right now, Ms. Sandretto explained. Mr. Smith was curious if there was any reason not to move forward with this aggregate. Ms. Sandretto answered that the savings, that is the savings in that they would reevaluate up until the point that the agreement is signed. There being no objections, the committee agreed to recommend both resolutions, three to nothing, report to City Council. The water and sewer miscellaneous fees, Ms. Gotsi explained that last month, they presented the spreadsheet with the proposed fees, and that they have prepared a comparison of area cities and their fees. Mr. Smith wanted to know if there are any general income tax dollars that are contributed to the water department, or if it is self-sufficient through the actual fees generated. Ms. Gotsi answered that there's $45,000 of income tax provided to the sewer funds, and that it is currently the only income tax contributed to it. Mr. Smith wanted to know what the justification for a higher charge to an outside resident versus a city resident. Ms. Gotsi stated that an outside resident does not pay income tax, property tax, and that the city is holding the debt, even though it benefits those outside the city using our services. Ms. Sandretto added that it encourages annexation into the city. Mr. Smith believes that it is not appropriate to charge more, because we are assuming that there will be inflation. Ms. Matroni disagrees and thinks that we are not being good stewards of the citizens' money by not trying to do, do what we can to help them out. Mr. Smith thinks that we should lead by example by not charging more, because the water department is funded by the users, not the taxpayers. Ms. Sandretto stated that her recommendation is, is to look at this again next year, which Ms. Gotsi agreed. Mr. Fuller wanted to know if we could word this in a way where we are not in a scenario where we are making money. Ms. Sandretto answered that these are break-even numbers, and that the goal is not to make money on our citizens, just not to lose money on the product and service provided. I, uh, mentioned that I would like there to be two readings and then a vote. Ms. Sandretto reminded the committee members that there can be decision on the first reading, and that they do not have to wait until the second reading to have discussion. Next topic was a bid award for the wastewater treatment plant ferris chloride. Ms. Gotsi stated that there were, that they use ferris chloride at the wastewater treatment plant primarily for phosphorus reduction, which they have been using since the seventies and eighties. Phosphorus is a main case of algal blooms in Lake Erie. An additional benefit to the use of ferris is that it reduces the odors emitted from the wastewater treatment plant. The city received two bids for ferris chloride, and PBS Technologies provided the lowest and best bid. This is up to a three-year period, but we are not locked in each year. There being no objections, the committee agreed three, zero, to move this forward to City Council. A change order for this GATA upgrade at the water wastewater treatment plant, this is a resolution authorizing change order number one of the agreement, and the amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine, or $230.89 for the upgrade of the GATA system at the wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Gotsi stated that there was a finding that some maintenance screens would be an additional enhancement that would help maintenance personnel to keep track of runtimes on all various equipment, and to send a flashing alert when time for maintenance was coming up. There was also some out-of-scope work on some software that occurred, which was an operational necessity. operational necessity. Ms. Godsey stated that they are asking for this to be passed as an emergency because the work has been done and they are obligated to pay this vendor. There being no objections, committee agreed three to zero to move this forward to City Council. In other business, Mr. Smith thanked Ms. Cabot for the update on the water tower and wanted to know what happened with the original stencils. Ms. Cabot is not sure if the city ever had them in their possession, but they have been searching all city buildings for them. I want to know with the oversized agreement, if it will put the city ahead of things ever. Ms. Godsey stated that yes, the infrastructure cost recovery program lays out in a grid what the sewers would have to be. When a developer is laying out a subdivision, they can choose to run sewer through the subdivision rather than along the main roads. Ms. Cabot added that they help us out by oversizing the pipe and then city reimburses them. Ms. Matroni had that it saves us money in many ways, has a win-win situation to her. Mr. Smith asked if we ever thought about paying through the sidewalk into a multi-use path in a new subdivision. Ms. Cabot said that several developers done this and they built out their developments, which is Canterbury and Coventry Point. There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 7:24 PM. Effectively submitted. And I do have a few pieces of legislation I'd introduce tonight. I would like to introduce Resolution 19 and 20 dash 2022 and move that the rules be suspended to offer it by number and title only in dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 19, 2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into a customer supply agreement for the provision of third-party electric generation for residential and small commercial aggregation participants within the city of Perrysburg and declaring an emergency. Resolution 20, 2022, accepting the proposal of Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC to provide natural gas supply through opt-out aggregation to eligible residents and small businesses in the city of Perrysburg and declaring an emergency.
I move that resolutions 19 and 20 dash 2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
I would like to introduce Resolution 21 dash 22 and move that the rules be suspended to offer its reading by number and title only in dispense with the second reading.
Second. Wait, you're having the, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 2022, authorizing the word of the bid in agreement to PVS Technologies for purchase of ferris chloride for the wastewater treatment plant in an amount of 55 cents per pound of ferris chloride within option for two additional years and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 21 dash 2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 2022, a resolution amending Resolution 73, 2019, an authorizing change order number one to the agreement in an amount not to exceed $19,230.89 for the upgrade to the SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Excuse me. I move that Resolution 22, dash 2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 2022, authorizing the word of the bid in agreement to PVS Technologies for purchase of ferris chloride for the wastewater treatment plant in an amount of 55 cents per pound of ferris chloride within option for two additional years and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 21, 2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 22, 2022, a resolution amending Resolution 73, 2019, an authorizing change order number one to the agreement in an amount not to exceed $19,230.89 for the upgrade to the SCADA system at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Excuse me. I move that Resolution 22, dash 2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoosen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ordnance 11, 2022, amending catified ordinance 1060.04, tap or connection charges of the city of Perrysburg Utilities Code, catified by ordinance 46, 2012, and passed on March 6th, 2012. Ordinance 12, dash 2022, amending catified ordinance 1060.08, capital expansion charge of the city of Perrysburg Utilities, catified ordinance by ordinance 46, 2012, and passed on February 7th, 2017. Ordinance 13, 2022, amending catified ordinance 1050.09, capital expansion charge of the city of Perrysburg Utilities Code, catified by ordinance 46, 2012, and passed on November 4th, 2003.
Any discussion? I'll just ask a quick question here for clarification. I know that in the meeting minutes, when I sat through the public utilities, we talked about the annexation as one of the reasons. I know a portion of our watering district is in the 99-year agreement. Correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm just looking at our law director on this, is for someone to request annexation into the city of Perrysburg, they are required to have a continuous, someone that's, say, that lives 200 feet from the city of Perrysburg and their individual home can't request to come into the city of Perrysburg unless there's every other home in that, in between. The contiguous.
You have to.
Yes, that's the word I was looking for.
Yes.
So you can't just ran, so if someone didn't want the fees, they would have to make sure all their other neighbors agreed to.
Yes. What you're asking is if you're not in any way touching the border of the city of Perrysburg, you're not getting annexed, like you're contiguous.
Okay. And according to the 99-year agreement, if I understand that correctly as well, and this might, I'm not expecting you to know the answer to this one, is we cannot force anyone within that 99-year agreement to actually annex, they have to make that request to us.
That's not entirely true. What the 99-year agreement does is it creates an area outside of the city of Perrysburg with fees of 75 that you have to request, that the resident has to request of us that we annex them. West of 75, which is still Perrysburg Township or Willabon Township, can be forced annexed if we want to. So the agreement sets up what I refer to as an annexation agreement for where we can force annex versus where we can't.
Yeah. So that's what I was trying to get at, is the east of 75, because I'm looking at the map here, and east boundary can't be forced to be annexed in. And from what I was reading through the actual agreement, you cannot use the water and sewer rates as a reason to force someone into annexing.
You mean west?
From east, from that point.
We can't force them into annexing for any reason from that agreement.
Yeah.
So they have to come to us and ask us, and they have to even do this.
Yeah, there's no condition. That's what I wanted to. Right, it's 75, but east boundary, it's just what the map was from, the 2021 degree, 2001 agreement.
So, yes, did I answer your question then?
Yeah, I just wanted to make certain that, because I was focused more on areas that we can at this point, but.
Yeah.
And that's really my whole point. I think everyone's getting a good idea of where I stand on this at this point. Unless we get a justification of how an increase in costs is affecting our taxpayers, I will not be supporting a up-charge to those who are not city residents as it's a user-based system and not a income-tax-based system.
Ms. Godsey here, I have a question for you. Like, the additional charges incurred by our crews going out to fix one of these that's not in our city limit is not necessarily going to be reimbursed fully by them.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, Matroni, that is correct. We do, we are not able to define explicitly what an individual, any individual case is going to cost. It's based on an average.
Yeah.
So the point would be that the city taxpayer would pay for that service?
For the service to the township person for repairing the water.
Possibly.
Yes.
Yes.
I would point out, looking at the maps as well, and looking at the service area, where our Utilities Division, which is on east boundary, is actually in the far northeast corner of our water service area. Being the case, we have residents out in Willabon that would be paying more than what the, would be, it'd be more costly for our city crews to go out to Willabon than it would be for them to go and fix something within the city limits of east boundary. So the question I would ask is, if that's the case, why is there not a charge for mileage?
They're, they're not going to pay anything at all, let alone mileage. And, and, and.
It's a point.
So the point is, our, our citizens are subsidizing these repairs, and a little bit of this can be offset by this different tax rate. That's all I'm saying.
And to those that were involved in the 99-year agreement, if we can reflect that that far, was there not, wasn't the up-charge to the outside because of some other trade-off?
Yes.
So would we not have to address the other trade-off?
Right.
To make that kind of change?
I'll let Tim answer as well, but there were a number of conditions and compromises, and one was we were allowed to continue the up-charge because we would be compromising in other areas where residents would be receiving a service in exchange for not being charged, particularly to have that go out there. So there were a whole bunch of compromises that were understood to last the entire term of the agreement, which is 99 years. And that was one of the, one of the conditions that the township trustees and the city elected officials agreed to was that that up-charge would remain throughout that term of the agreement.
Yeah.
I voted against the agreement, but that was the.
But yeah, a major compromise was that we worked in a quote-unquote forced annexation in the portion of the service area, so the township had a place to grow.
Right.
And we, each jurisdiction decided that, okay, the township will grow over here, the city can't, you know, take, take those properties by quote-unquote forced annexation, whereas on the other side we could. And yes, the, all these, these charges, and the whole rate structure was agreed at that time. Jonathan, I got to ask you, I'm not tracking your point, because if you say they shouldn't pay more and everyone should pay the same, then that's going to cost the city more than it's more.
Since it's a user-based system, it's not, used through the income tax. I don't, but somebody necessarily see that. The other thing that I'll point out, if we're talking about the up-charges, with these fees, and I'm looking at the 99-year agreement as well, right now, the blanket increase is a 25% increase. Based off of the 99-year agreement, the water rates was at 115% and was up to 150% charge, and the sanitary sewers is 125%. So it's a 25% up-charge. If there is going to be a consistency with the 99-year agreement to use as a tool or mechanism, why would the water fees be 25% over the 15% water rate charge? So we're looking at the fees, I'll try to re-explain this. We have different fees for the, the water and sewer. Right now, on the 99-year agreement, it's a 25% rate increase on the sewer rates. It's 15% rate increase on the water rates. With these fees, they both touch two different funds. One's the water fund, one's going to be the sewer fund. Right now, the water fund has an increase of 25% on these fees that we're, have in front of us. If it's to match the 99-year agreement, shouldn't those fees that are associated with the water not be a 15% increase versus the 25?
Well, doesn't the 99-year agreement address the rate charge?
The charge of the rate, but if.
See, I don't think it had got, did it get into capital expansion charges and tap fees?
No, it didn't get into, it wasn't designed to do that. It was also designed to basically acknowledge that city residents, the city would make, the city would be providing the service, and as such, there would be inherent capital costs and fixed costs that would be, would be not fair to city residents to actually be paying more than township residents who weren't being assessed any of those costs. So that was basically the design of that in case there was any issues. And that was a compromise negotiated term that the parties all understood would last the entire term. So if the water rates have those built into it, why do the fees need to have that built into it for the capital? I guess, I'll, I'll touch on two things here, is it was made as a point that the 99-year agreement had an up-charge associated, and that's why we have it on the fees, but I'm also hearing that the fees are separate from the water rate up-charges. Not necessarily. Well, that's what I, was argued both ways. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm a little perplexed.
I wanted to point out to council that, if I recall correctly, and Alice, you may remember this better than I do, even though we were not here at the inception of the 99-year agreement, part of what the city also gave up is they gave up income tax. So we remit to Perrysburg Township a portion of our income tax for any growth on commercial properties that occurs between state Route 75 West, I think, to, hmm, maybe Fort Beggs Road or Hall Prairie. And we can get you those numbers, but those are income tax dollars paid by our residents and non-residents that do go back to Perrysburg Township and do not stay in city coffers.
I think we have this discussion several years ago, and that at actual point, we produced.
We did have trustee Mac who wanted to open up the 99-year agreement, and we indicated we were more than happy to because there was items that we would like to get rid of, that he would, and he would like other ones to get rid of, and we never heard back from him.
I think we found out that we assess back more than we collect in the up-charges, so we were more than open to.
Yes.
Consider that as.
the expansion, the water that we purchased from Toledo, the fees to run the wastewater treatment plant. All is that, all of that is not funded, with the exception of the sewer separation project, is not funded by residents per se, it's funded by rate payers. The vast majority happen to be citizens. There are a subset that are outside the city of Perrysburg but receive either water or sewer from the city of Perrysburg.
We can provide you with tax, will you send back to them?
Yes, Ms. Rathburn can give us those numbers.
But just for clarification, the fees have nothing to do, these water and sewer fees have nothing to do with the actual rates itself as part of the 99-year agreement?
Correct. The 99-year agreement did not address the ancillary costs that a governmental entity occur, incur, incurs, can't talk right now, incurs when they are owners of a water distribution system and a sanitary sewer collection system. That was purely on, on the rates.
Thank you, because that's, my whole point is, it's a fee to replace a part. I still believe that without a justification as to what the increases for the fee itself, I want to see numbers to say where that increase in that fee has to come from in order to justify why it's more for the township versus the city. I understand with the rates in the 99-year agreement, but I see a fee as something completely separate and outside of what the rates are. But I would point out, again, the 99-year agreement covered other items that weren't, for example, the tax that we pay back. And so if you're measuring apples to oranges, you have to include that as a comparison. But the, the other tax is part of the 99-year agreement, is what you're saying? Well, yeah, the actual calculation of the amount isn't, the requirement is. So, but if you're going to say that this rate is charged just to utility users, you can't just put that in a vacuum because the whole rate structure, that factor is in fact, is included in a whole silo of things that have to be considered when you're calculating the charges. But the rate is specific to the particular thing that you're talking about. So just back one more time, and I'll, I'll end it, just because I know, kind of going in circles almost. Again, if we're looking at the rates, it's 15% increase for anything associated with the water, 25% associated with sewer, this is a blanket 25%. And I think that's something that should be looked at a little more closely. But I'll, I'll get off my soapbox.
And Tom, just, just to make sure I'm understanding your point, what we're voting on with these extra charges, the tap charges, things like that, it's part of the whole bigger system that was put in place. So there was give and take, and that's part of, this is where we charge a little extra when you're outside the city because of the give and take that occurred?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, I guess my decision, I voted, we had numerous questions in January at the public utilities meeting then and this one, and that was a big question. I don't think I myself was satisfied with the reason for, was to encourage people to annex. That was not, I've not, it's not warranted, but we are, it sounds like from our experts that we're losing money in this scenario. That's why I decided to word it to city council, and thank you guys for your wisdom and history on the, on much of this. I don't have that. So we are, I'd just like to make note where we are in a situation where it sounds like we're losing money on this, at this particular service. I would request, so that in the ordinance, it does say that all tap connection charges shall be paid into the water replacement and extension fund. Could we get some, I guess, some of that, where that's going to go and how that money affects, affect the budget if not addressed currently? I mean, this is the first reading, we've got time for...
Yeah, it goes into the, I mean, those funds are separate, but we can get you the information as to where it go, it goes to the utilities and would be used for utilities, it's a separate fund.
Okay.
But you have to use for general fund expenses.
Yeah, we can't use it for general fund expenses, it has to be used consistent with the utilities.
I think that may help some of us understand too, where the money...
We can get you that, we can kind of get an explanation of the separate funds. I think that's a pretty fair new council person request, and I know just about every new council person is, is that, so I know I did, so we can get that to you at other councils.
We'll take it, yeah, I'm still fairly new.
Yeah. It's clear, new for the third time.
Yeah.
The governmental funds and all the different regulations.
But it can't be used for just general funds.
Yeah.
It's allocated, so, but that, an explanation of that is certainly warranted, and there's no problem with that.
Thank you.
All right, end of discussion?
That's the end of discussion. And I just wanted to make note that March 23, it's actually the final, the next public utilities meeting, and that is all in my report.
Service.
We did not meet, the next meeting was March 23, and I love that utilities go first because I don't have to scramble to figure out when my...
Excellent. Any other business to come for council?
Couple things. Just want, just want to know a timeline on live broadcasts for council meetings, if that, if there's any updates there.
There was a week, we had our second rounds of, of interviews last week, and we're meeting this week to select the system.
Oh, fantastic. And then I do have one request, I touched base with Jan a little bit about this and service. I would like, if possible, just to get it started, analysis of how it's solving some roadways. I know there was just a study that's released that basically talks about how road salt can affect the salinity of the lakes, and that's alarming, just like global warming was. So I would like the city of Perrysburg to try to stay ahead of that and...
We try, we try to buy school of both brine and salt.
Perfect.
And we've been using brine as a way to reduce...
More than we probably used to reduce road salt bouncing off the road and soon either storm sewers torn into landscape beds because of how many species are not salt tolerant.
Yeah.
So we try to stick with the brine because that does not spill over into drainage systems. We're also very positive if it's going to be a very wet weather, wet snow, rain, we won't put down the brine because, you know, that just washes it off and is not good for the road system or the water system, so we try to be very judicial on how we apply that.
And I think if you find you end up using less salt in the long run when you use more brine.
Yeah.
Because it's less, and it's a little bit more proactive.
We've also taken a new approach as to, I mean, I think Rob is very aware about that issue, and as our approach to how we solve is constantly something to review, happy to review, but I know it's, the approach is to use less salt, you know, balance the need for safety versus balance the need of substantial consequence, independent consequence.
Fantastic, thank you.